I call this special meeting to order for Tuesday, October 1st, 2024. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Susan Payne.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Sharon McDonald.
Here.
Commissioner Nick Paul.
Present.
Commissioner Stephen Burnett.
Here.
Commissioner Warren Robinson.
Here.
Commissioner Josh Riden.
Here.
Commissioner Mark Tapley.
Here.
Mayor Madam, we have a quorum.
Okay, thank you, Rachel. We are going to start with the invocation, I guess, I'll just go ahead and do the invocation. And then the pledge, do you want to lead us in pledge? Mayor Pro Tem McDonald will lead us in the pledge, if you'll stand. Father God, we thank you for this day, we thank you for this time, Lord, that we have to come together and discuss the business of this city. Lord, I lift this city up to you each and every citizen, Lord, and I pray nothing but blessings over them and over this city and over our time tonight, Lord. And I pray that it is a productive meeting, Lord, and I pray that you would just be the one, Lord, that would, as we go throughout the rest of this week, you would be the one that would lead us, guide us, direct us, and protect us in all that we do and all that we say, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Almost forgot about the pledge, alright. We are going to move on to the approval of the agenda, do I have a motion to approve the agenda? I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tem McDonald, do I have a second?
A second.
A second from Commissioner Robinson, can we put up the vote?
My vote is not coming up.
Mine neither.
I've been there too.
Yeah, it's not coming up on anybody's.
It's not coming up?
Uh-uh.
Okay, so do all, you all vote yes?
Yes.
Okay.
There it is.
Pass seven, motion passes seven zero. We're going to move on to new business, discuss Upper Canyon and salt fires debris at the Otero Green Tree landfill, and Joe Lewandowski, there you are, and Dave Nunley, I don't know if you need to come up or not, I just feel like Joe can handle it, right?
Thank, thank you Mayor and Commissioners and Manager Hernandez. What I needed to talk to you about tonight, I asked to have this put on here, we're not looking for any action, the staff can take the necessary action to continue it. But it's about, you know, the status of the landfill with what put the fires and the floods on the mountain, all that, most of that debris is coming to us. Before I go into what the status is, and I'll keep that short here in a minute, but for some of the lot of new faces here, understand the relationship on the landfill. A lot of people think the landfill is the city of Almagordo's landfill, it is actually not the city of Almagordo's landfill. The landfill actually belongs to the two solid waste authorities, the Green Tree Solid Waste Authority, which is Lincoln County, Corona, Capitan, Garizozo, Riodoso, Riodoso Downs, and the Otero County Solid Waste Authority, which is Otero County, Almagordo, Tolorosa, and Cloudcroft. Reason I bring that up is just so you understand the relationship in the future, we'll have our annual meeting in March, but, you know, there's city staff out there, but everything out there is actually owned by the two solid waste authorities, just to understand the relationship. Back in 93, when we built, I was the manager of the Lincoln Group back, Mr. Stockwell is the manager here, when we built the landfill in 93, and we formed that, the ten government entity type thing, that's why the landfill's been so successful. You got ten government entities contributing to one landfill versus one landfill, one entity, that gets very expensive, so it's been very successful to that point. So, that's kind of the relationship in case that comes up, I just know, a lot of people says, well, Almagordo landfill, Almagordo landfill, it's actually not, you're just the agent that was hired to run the landfill for the group. Now, as far as the Upper Canyon and salt flat, salt fires and flood damage, as you know, quite a bit of damage, one of the worst up there, fourteen hundred structures this time around versus Little Barrel back in the day, which only three hundred structures. The cleanup has been going on since July, actually prior to July 1, stopping and going as the floods came and shut everybody down and so on. But the landfill itself has been taking debris from up there since July 1, and we knew that the volumes are going to be excessive, way above anything we normally took, so basically we told them, we'd give them a time period where we'd start taking it, and then once we reached, after about sixty to ninety days, we'd evaluate how much more we can do or can't do, as far as taking those volumes at the landfill. The reason that we're bringing it up is, the staff has done a great job of keeping up with, and I'll show you the numbers in a minute, which is amazing, I've been doing this forty-three years, since nineteen eighty-one, the solid waste, and I've never seen a better landfills group that out there than the group that's out there, even with them being shorthanded, they've been able to do, take care of that. The issue is, it has been overwhelming, we need to build the next cell, and we already knew that before the fire came, in fact, we had already hired the engineer in May to get started on designing the next cell, cell six, we're in cell five now. What, and then in June, they did the surveys, flyovers, and all that prior to the fire, so we were already on our process of building the next cell. To construct the cell out there, you know, it looks like a big hole to most any, most normal people, it's just like, you can't believe that cost a million three or million five for a big hole in the ground. It's a ten acre cell, but with the liners, leachage systems, monitoring systems, everything that goes into building that, that cell, that's what, with a one point three million to five million, one point five million, and it costs that much money. But it takes twelve to eighteen months, it's not something you just go out and dig and then throw, throw the liners in and go on your way. The process requires, you know, the engineer to do his stuff, do the specifications, submit them to the environment department, the environment department reviews, approves all that, it comes back, once it's reviewed, final specs are generated, then it's turned over to your finance, over to procurement, to go out through the bid process, to hire the contractor to come in and do the liners, and so you have to go through that whole bid process, then once you award that, then you have mobilization to getting the contractor in, and then finally construction, and then final inspection by the state to allow you to use the thing. So that's why, it's, it sounds strange, you know, it'll take twelve to eighteen months just to make a big hole in the ground, but it does, it's, all that goes together to make that happen. So, we started the process, we always, this is our fifth cell, this is the sixth cell we're building, and we've used the same process since the day when we opened the place in nineteen ninety-three. It takes twelve to eighteen months to get through that process to construct. At the time we contracted with the engineer, my estimate, the estimates we had is airspace available, in other words, the life of the cell that we're in right now, to make sure we have enough space to take all the garbage up to the time that the new cell is ready and approved to use. We, we had eighteen to twenty-four months, so to construct, twelve to eighteen months, life in the current cell, eighteen to twenty-four months, so we had a pretty good buffer there from anywhere from six to twelve months of time that overlapped, that we would be safe to make sure we always have space for the garbage that gets generated from all, both counties. So, again, we, we've already hired the engineer, all that stuff's moving along, so, and then the fire, and then the floods, and then the fire, and the floods, and so on, around and around. Under a normal five-day week that we have out there, we normally get sixty to seventy vehicles a day. We don't get a lot out there, because, you know, back when we built the landfill, also to build Lavelle, to keep the public away from going, the small vehicles from going to the landfill, like in the old days, little vehicles, big vehicles, garbage trucks, dump trucks, everybody was intermedled together. With Lavelle, the small vehicles go there, only the large trucks would go, so it's only sixty to seventy vehicles per day. Annually, we only, we do about seventy thousand tons of garbage annually, is what a normal year is, and that's been like that from the first year in ninety-three, when we opened it, we did sixty-two thousand, and then in ninety-four, we did sixty-nine thousand, and we've been at that sixty-nine thousand up to, I think the highest we got was about seventy-eight thousand at one time, but we've always been in this seventy, which is amazing to go thirty-some years, and, and our tonnages are almost identical to what they were when we started. So, so a normal routine week out, day out there, sixty to seventy loads a day, annually about seventy thousand tons of garbage to come in. Since the fire and flood started, and starting, just tracking from July 1 to September 23rd, basically sixty-five workdays, the days that the landfill was open during that time period. In that time period, we took three thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine loads, there was, three thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine trucks came through the gate to dump fireloads. And out of that, we had thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and four tons of garbage come through. So, it came through, and it's about six hundred tons a day, on top of what our normal volumes are. So, basically, and so it was average, and we're averaging again about sixty-seven vehicles a day, but Daryl and them had some days as a hundred and twenty vehicles, on top of the garbage, the very routine vehicles, this is just fireloads coming in. So, to summarize the numbers, basically, prior, you know, the normal type thing, we'd have, you know, this, during that, this ninety-day period, we had three thousand nine hundred routine, normal garbage loads come through, we had three thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine fireloads come through, almost identical in number of loads. The difference is, is the material is coming off the mountain, is almost twice as heavy as what the garbage truck loads are. So, in that same time period, the landfill took in, in that three-month period, took in seventeen thousand five hundred tons, but from the fireloads, they took thirty-nine thousand tons in the same time period, so we took in fifty-six thousand tons, and we're used to taking in seventy thousand tons for the whole year. So, we basically did nine months' worth of tonnage in three months. Now, what that matters is, they've been able to keep up with it and all that, but the problem is, is the life on cell five, to make sure you have space for all your solid waste that's generated on a regular basis, in other words, the garbage out of the dumpsters, the carts, the people hauling their own and all that, the routine garbage that we're talking about. Again, working with the environment department, we're not the only one involved, Roswell's landfill is taking some, but they're taking maybe one-tenth of what we're taking. Mesa Verde was taking some for a while, I'm not sure how much they're actually accepting at this point, but it's miniscule compared to what we're taking, and we're it, we're kind of the it for what's going on with that. They're a long ways from being done, there's something, there's something different, which we've been trying to talk to them about, is they made a change up there, from Little Bear, we never had this kind, or the, the other two fires, Co' Papale or the others, that we never had this kind of tonnage before. For some reason FEMA came in and wants them to scrape the ground, six inches of topsoil, plus the dirt debris, plus six inches of topsoil, to go at the same time, that's why the ton, the tonnage is so heavy. But it is what it is until, you know, as long as they're, that's the way the orders are, that's kind of the way it has to come. Now, we've, at the very beginning, we told the environment department, we have a, a space issue, we'll take, work with it until, and then evaluate, and then have to come back, and may have to put a, a cap on how many vehicles per day from the fireloads, to ensure that we have the space necessary to get us to the next cell. Like I said, we, basically, cell five, prior to the fire, the, the emergency, we had, we had eighteen to twenty-four months minimum, we would, we'd be fine to get that done, and we would be able to take in about a hundred and forty thousand tons, which would have been normal, and that's what we're expecting. But the problem is with the fire, we take, you know, we take in a hundred and forty thousand tons in that airspace, you know, when we talk about airspace, in the garbage business, air is valuable, something empty is, has value. But we've already taken in fifty-nine thousand five hundred of that, so we have like eighty thousand cubic tons, tons of space that we can fill in. So, the eighteen to twenty-four months of life expectancy on cell five is now thirteen to nineteen months, and, and that's, we're okay, we'll still get the next cell built, but much more than that, it's going to be a touch and go to make sure we have enough space to keep the garbage coming in, because we have to keep the garbage, you know, the regular routine garbage coming in. The environment department also, it does allow us to set, you know, what tonnages we can take, they don't want to cause damage to our systems, and they, they have other options, they are stockpiling on the mountain, at the old Fort Stanton landfill, a couple other places, quarries and other thing, in fact, they've got three to four hundred thousand cubic yards of material that's just sitting there, that they've already collected, but they haven't tried to move, they're trying to figure out what to do with that. So, basically, just, that's trying to give you an idea of what's going on, because we are, as of Monday, we need, we will put a limit on them of forty vehicles of fireloads per day. Like I said, on average, they've been bringing sixty-five, so it is a decrease, but it's not a totally decrease, that we can't take anymore, we still have space that we can, we can take the forty, along with the regular garbage, and still meet the timeline we need to meet, to build the cell and keep everything, and then once the other cell comes on, if they want to, up their, their loads and all that, we can take almost anything they want to send, but it may mean we have to, may have to move on to cell seven and build, start building it earlier than we normally would. So, and it, it's been, like I said, in March, when the solid waste authorities, as I described you before, the Otero County Solid Waste Authority and the Green Trees, there's actually only two owners, you, you own the landfill, the city of Almagordo, Tolorosa owns the landfill, everybody owns the landfill, but indirectly, but through the solid waste authority, there's actually only two owners of the landfill, that's the two solid waste authorities, and it's been like that from day one, in fact, if you ever attend one of our meetings, you'll notice there's only one vote, one vote, and we've been like that since the beginning. Luckily, we only had one time we needed someone to break the tie, and there wasn't, and in fact, when we set it up, we even asked, should we have a third vote to break the tie, we said, well, if we keep it at one and one, we're going to have to get along, and so for thirty-three year, thirty-one years, we have gotten along, and it's one of the most successful landfills in the state. So, come Monday, we, we'll notify DRC, who's the main emergency coordinator up there, coordinating all the trucks, they got trucks from all over the country in here right now, some of that's going to be leaving and heading east because of the hurricane, so they may be slowing down on their own anyway. But we'll be notifying them to move it back to forty, and then we have some other things we're working on operationally wise, to make sure we get some additional assistance out there, and make sure we don't lose the equipment we do have going. Again, I want to commend Daryl Grau, who's the landfill supervisor, he was put into place there a year and a half ago, had been running your Lavelle convenience station all these years, had never done landfill, sometimes it's best to have someone that's never done it before, because they don't have any bad habits, Daryl went in, took hold, really cares about the whole, his whole crew, you know, because they're actually operating with three, three to four employees lower than they, they should have eight, and I think they got four right now, and they still handled all this. And of course, we want to, Dave, not only for being smart enough for hiring Daryl, so, I didn't mean man, but, but Daryl's the one you really want to say. But, but the point is, it's, it's holding, we're okay, we'll get it done, but we're going to have to hold back, and I know there were some concerns about opening it up seven, six, five, six days a week, and this and that, yeah, that'd be great if we had another cell that had five, six years, because each one of those cells lasts six to seven years normally. This one's going to shut down sooner than normal, and then if we continue the fireloads into cell six, that one will probably only last four years, but the revenues come with that, so it'll offset, it won't hurt us. Will we run out of landfill space, there's only, it's only designed for eight cells, no, it won't, because we, we have permitted a hundred and sixty acres, but north of that, when we bought it, bought the land out there, we bought four hundred and twenty-eight acres for thirty thousand dollars, so we own everything north of that too, so we, we got, you'll never run out of space as far as a landfill, it's just this immediate situation, it hit at the wrong time, if the other cell was online, we wouldn't even be talking about this, we'd be taking it all and dealing with it. But we've got to control the situation to ensure there's room for all the garbage, the normal, routine garbage that comes off the streets. I'll answer any questions, if you have any, or.
Anybody have any questions?
Joe, can you talk about the, the fact that there was an application that went to the state that got denied, so that affects?
One of the things we were doing is, the operations, Daryl's been doing great with the equipment we have, but also we're pushing the equipment, because what we're going, and March is going to be an interesting meeting, because we're going to have to look at the budget as far as next cell, move that up, make sure we have money. One thing about the landfill, any of you have been on the commission or involved with the commission, you don't, you probably have never even talked about the landfill, and it's not a department you've ever put any money into, it's not a department that you've ever had issues with, it's kind of, it takes care of itself. The landfill itself has cash reserves, it, up to this point, for thirty-one years, when we need a million dollar scraper, we buy it, if we need to build the next cell, we have the cash, everything's done with cash, we don't do any financing or anything like that. But the problem is, with this equipment working as hard as it is, we may have to replace some of that, it's also stretching us to the limits to take that. DRC, Emergency Services, which is kind of the, the group that's, it's coordinating all that up there, they've got multiple, probably fifty different subcontractors with trucks, excavators, and everything else, running. We asked, to continue to be able to move that, keep this moving, and keep our staff going and equipment going, we, we were looking at them bringing in, they offered to bring in another dozer to help us out, which would be greatly appreciated and needed, it helps, you know, because we could separate the fireloads from the routine garbage, and just efficiently wise it would work. They went back to the state and asked the state to help, they're getting paid for every load, they've asked them to pay for the additional dozer to come down, and they would send their own employee to operate their own dozer and handle all the fireloads off to the, off to the side for us. They went to the state, initially, on a Friday, they were told, yeah, they can be done, it went through three or four more days, and I guess it got up to the top wherever it went, then they said, no, never mind, we're not going to do that, so that we lost the opportunity that, and we might be able to talk to some of our representatives to see maybe, this is not, you know, we're helping our neighbors, we're helping one of our partners, because they actually, the group on the hill owns this landfill as much as you do. But, we're talking about having to get additional equipment or wear out our equipment on this emergency, and the feds, the federal, well, the funding agencies, let's put it that way, because it's multiple funding agencies, have said, no, they don't want to help us out down here, but as far as at the landfill, to provide the additional equipment we need down there. So, we're still working on trying to work something out with that, but, and we want that to still continue to happen, and we need to make it happen, no matter how it works out, so we might need to have some of our representatives, everything else, ask Santa Fe why, and what needs to be done to get that changed over. It's not a huge amount, they're basically offering a D8 dozer with an operator for two sixty an hour, which is a great deal, it's not going to bankrupt the state or the FEMA or whoever's funding the projects, so, they, again, they turned it down, but they may, they might be willing to reconsider the payment, to get them to do so. Otherwise, because if our dozers go down, that's it, we're not taking any fireloads, we're done, we're just taking garbage, you know, and if they don't bring that extra dozer in, and we lose it, guess what, zero the fireloads, you're on hold till we get something going that we can get in there. And when it's your fire, your emergency, it's all our fire and our emergency, don't take me wrong, but, point is, what we're doing there, you know, Roswell's taking a little bit, Mesa Verde's taking a little bit, we're taking the hit. So, we can talk about how to make contact and try to convince a few people that that needs to be taken care of.
Actually, I think, I think we ought to maybe have staff draft us a letter that all of us sign to send to Ron and Bill and, who's our other one, John, and, and maybe request that they put a little pressure on NMED to move this application for this, this cell forward a little faster, and then maybe ask about this issue, but, have we looked at maybe possibly leasing another dozer ourselves?
We can find one, we can lease one, we had, this here was the perfect resolution, because they're bringing an experienced operator to get on their own piece of equipment and be able to do that, that, that means a heck of a lot more than, you rent a dozer and then stick someone on there, we, you know, they just hired, you know, the landfill's just got a new operator, but they've got to get him up to speed.
Okay.
He just started Monday, but that's not doing us any good right now, even though we had another dozer, it would take a while to get it.
Yeah.
That's what this company does, is they go around, they, they go from emergency to emergency, and they have all the expert equipment operators that they can move around like that. And what I'll do is get, for staff, I'll get the, the actual funding agencies, the DRC asked to get funded, so there's a contact, they can actually go directly to that.
Is that through the federal government or state government?
It's a combination of state and federal, working together through FEMA and the state emergency groups, I'll get the information.
Okay.
The environment department itself is not the one that said, no, the environment department's basically overseeing us to make sure environmentally we're handling it properly, the haulers are handling it properly, everybody's registered, we've had to track all them, because there's asbestos issues, there's a lot of different issues going on that most of you don't know about, that we're taking care of at the same time, but it's, it's more the funding agency, the emergency response groups that need to be talked, visited with. The environment department itself has been very cooperative.
Okay.
Sorry.
Any other questions?
I don't know how to turn the ring off. Anybody else have any questions?
It's anything, it's all within the staff's purview to make all this stuff, take, take care of it, it's more to keep you up to date, and I already went to Green Tree today, met with staff of the Green Tree Solid Waste Authority, your partners, and they're distributing the information to their board members, and I'll be talking to any of them that have concerns too, and they will have concerns that we're. be talking to any of them that have concerns, too. And they will have concerns that we're cutting back, but at the same time, you don't have a choice, they don't have a choice, because if we run out of space for garbage, we run out of space for their garbage, too.
Right.
There's not many other options. But again, they've been stockpiling the material way before they ever started bringing it down. There's no reason they can't stockpile it and regulate how it comes down and at a time, you know, where it's controlled.
Have you all reached out to Otero County as well? But, you know, I know you said you don't really have a dozer, but Otero County's part of this as well, right? If I remember right. And I think they've got three or four D7s, D8s sitting in.
Well, again, it's not an issue. We can find, we can get our hands on it.
We might be able to, like, borrow one of those and just take it out there, though.
Yeah, if we have to, we're going to have, we'll have to come up with something. I'm hoping to basically, we can work out an agreement with DRC and get that taken care of quickly and not have to. It's not, you know, a lot of people don't want to put their dozers in, because it is garbage, and if you know anything about, like, the garbage is more damaging than pushing dirt around. Most contractors that have dozers or that type of equipment, definitely don't. Those land, the dozers we have are landfill equipped, special equipment, special guards and protections and everything else. So, they don't, a lot of guys don't, you know, they don't want to lease you one, because of the damage that could possibly happen to a normal D6 or D8 dozer.
Any more questions?
So I have a comment. So I know that, like, Commissioner Tapley and maybe even Commissioner Paul, Commissioner Warren Robinson, the landfill's an amazing place. Like, you don't think it's, it's just trash. It's amazing, and they keep it well maintained. I encourage all of you to get with Dave and to take a tour out there. The cells, everything, what goes into trash is amazing. We went there on Monday, and it was chaos. Trucks coming in, trucks coming out, and they are, the staff is amazing. So I encourage everyone to get with Dave and see if you want to go out there just to learn more about it.
It's a garbage man's Disneyland.
We utilize it often. Anyway, all right. Anybody else?
Thanks for the review.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you. Okay. We're going to move on to, are we good? Okay. We're going to move on to item three. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Item two, recess into executive closed session in compliance when ten dash fifteen dash one to discuss limited personnel managers, or matters. The city manager, that is a mouthful. Do I have a motion to recess? I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tem McDonald. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Burnett. Can we put up the vote? I don't know if we're going to be able to.
Do you see them up now, or no?
No.
No. Are they coming up? Okay, so we're going to do this the old-fashioned way.
Okay.
Susan Payne?
Aye.
Sharon McDonald?
Aye.
Nick Paul?
Aye.
Stephen Burnett?
Aye.
Warren Robinson?
Aye.
Josh Roden?
Aye.
And Mark Tapley?
Aye.
I wonder if that's why. Join us in the meeting. Oh, might be possible.
Okay, motion passes seven zero. And we are recessing.
It's because we're not signed in.
Yeah, it's because we're not signed in. We're not actually joined.
Oh, we're not?
Nope.
Apparently, we didn't get signed in, Rachel. At this point, it doesn't matter. It's fine. And where are we going? Which way? Okay. Go that way?
I guess Dylan wasn't here today, and somebody else set it up.
Okay. I do have Commissioner Paul right here with me.
Okay.
Okay. He's right there. Look, it says right there. What does it say? Oh, how do you work this thing? Nick Paul. That's what it says. All right. We are going to reconvene into open session. Item, item three, reconvene into open section, session and take action as a result of our closed executive session. Do I have to do that as a separate motion, reconvene?
So you have to make a motion to reconvene.
Okay. So do I have a motion to reconvene?
So moved.
A motion from Commissioner Robinson. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second for Mayor Pro Tem McDonald. Are we logged in or we're still not logged in?
Some of us are, some of us aren't.
Okay. How do I tell if I'm logged in?
Locked in.
Oh, I am logged in. Okay.
I'm logged in now.
You want to put up the vote? Okay. Some are and some are not logged in.
Okay. So I'll just call. I'll just...
Okay.
Susan Payne?
Aye.
Sharon McDonald?
Aye.
Nick Paul?
Aye.
Stephen Burnett?
Aye.
Warren Robinson?
Aye.
Josh Ridden?
Aye.
Mark Tapley?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes seven zero. Hold on one second. I ju-- oh, he just called back. Hold on one second. Commissioner Paul, are you there?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I tried to hit the mute button and hit end call.
Ah, darn that. Okay. All right. We are, motion passed seven zero, so we have reconvened. Do I have a motion to, give me just one second. I'm sorry. A motion to appoint Stephanie Hernandez as acting city manager with an effective date of October fourteenth. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
A motion from Commissioner Robinson. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Mayor Pro Tem McDonald? Do you want to call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Susan Payne?
Aye.
Sharon McDonald? Nick Paul?
Aye.
Stephen Burnett?
Aye.
Warren Robinson?
Aye.
Josh Ridden?
Aye.
Mark Tapley?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Quick question on that. Should we have done that as a motion since it's not published that way?
I don't know. Should we have done that as a motion?
Or is it just as a direction?
Well, we took any action. It says take any action.
Okay. Is that legal? I just, I didn't know if it was a direction to staff or if it needed to be done as a motion.
No, I think, I think...
We're good with the motion because we had to come back to take action. And so to take action, we would have had to have made some kind of...
Okay. I just want to make sure we're legal on that.
Yeah. Okay. All right. So, motion passed seven zero. We, we said October fourteenth for payroll purposes. We know that Rick has appointed Stephanie already, but for official payroll pers- purposes, we, we set October fourteenth. And I think, does anybody else have anything? Anything else? No? Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn? A motion from Mayor Pro Tem McDonald. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Burnett. Should I just say all those in favor? Or how do you want me to do that?
Yes. No. You, the first, you just need a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting.
Right. But we have to vote, right?
You don't. You just need that first and that second and then adjourn.
Okay. All right. Then we are adjourned.
Good job.
Thank you.